From the Wayne County Courthouse in Goldsboro, North Carolina, Wayne Goldsboro Television brings you the meeting of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. The meeting begins shortly with an agenda briefing and the regular meeting will begin soon after. Please stand by for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting.
Everybody's doing well? Let's see this morning, the indication be Commissioner Cromartie and the pledge be Commissioner Dobbie. And approval to minutes, there's any adjustment on the agenda, Mr. Wood?
I don't believe we have any.
Yeah, we do.
Yes, sir, we have two add-ons and we actually have a replacement on one of the memos and therefore foreclosed properties, so if you want me to pass those out now? Your add-on is going to be, and it's actually on the board, it's not on your agenda, the first add-on is going to be about the open broadband.
Very good. Glad to see that walked on. She says she's got one, it's on her agenda, that's all of ours.
I would put that under unfinished.
Where did you put it already?
It's under unfinished.
Finished, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, we can make that number four.
Okay, that's exactly what I'm writing down.
Carol, you said there was a second?
Yes, sir, and the second add-on is, excuse me, a request to make real property surplus from the, well, there should be two there, one.
If y'all are in agreement, we could just add this under consent agenda.
I think so.
And that's where it is. That one or two. That one or two. There you go.
Would you do me a favor? There's a lady gonna come, she gonna get off the elevator in about two minutes from probation parole.
Just three of them there, I need one back.
169 lease country road.
The final piece that I will give out is a replacement to the two properties for the town of Fremont, there's actually-
Oh, 362 lease got to go, right?
You do?
Uh-huh. No, 362. You're going on the-
This is a replacement here.
Yes, sir. It does have a different property that she was waiting on.
I see that. I give a pretty little thought. Somebody say a conflict?
Yes.
Oh, man.
Should we just tie this lease country road in with these? I'm sorry, I was talking to-
Yes.
No, actually, we're-
Well, it's separate, because one is accepting the Gov. Deal offers, the other is just declaring a surplus so we can take it. So, it will need to be separate. I just put it down under consent as number 12, motion to surplus property.
And that's where I put it on me.
And this other that she gave you out is-
Six under consent agenda.
It's number six. Is it six or is it seven?
Going forward, if they will add on this list on these properties what the tax value is.
Okay.
Because there's nowhere on here showing what the tax value, he shows the cost to acquire.
Well, that's the outstanding taxes.
Well, I understand.
But you want the assessed value?
Yeah.
Okay. Carol, can you make the number?
Yes, sir, I am. And the one with the three properties, George, is number six on consent agenda, that's what it's replacing.
All right, so board's right on there. Everybody good on that, since we're gonna do it under consent agenda?
Yep. Is there anything else, Commissioner? All right, after that, we'll have Silvania Wickerson in, he's one of the members of Purple Heart, and he wants to give a presentation, I mean, a resolution does appreciation, and after he does that, we'll go down in front and have our picture taken with him. Public comments, and then we'll have public hearings for the rezoning request.
Can we get over that now?
You can. Or you just bring it right away, doesn't matter.
Good morning. We have two public hearings. The first one is a rezoning zoning map amendment. Wayne County zoning map of a .65 acre tract of land, it's actually two parcels, and it's zoned from residential agricultural 20 to R10. Just gonna make a comment, that did go before the planning board, the planning board recommended that it be approved, and I've not received any opposition to that, if the manager has not. Item number two is a 19.76 acre tract of land, and it is being zoned from light industry and residential agricultural 20 to all residential agricultural 30. This was a tract of land that was rezoned by the commissioners probably 10-plus years ago for a sawmill. That sawmill is being disposed and removed from the property, and they've got it marketed for sale, and they wished marketed for residential, back residential. I haven't received any opposition to that either. Both of these cases were sent to Seymour Johnson, and Seymour Johnson has made their review comments, and I included it in with your packages, I'm not sure it's in this agenda package, but it's in the previous one.
No, but it is on the board.
Yeah. But Seymour Johnson reviewed both of them and gave them a favorable recommendation. Question?
I do not have that mapped here. But how is this, on one, how are you able to get four lots out of .65 acres?
When you reduce the zoning from RA 20 to R10, your lot size requirements go from 20,000 square feet down to 10,000 square feet.
How can you put a residence on a 10,000? Oh, it's gotten sewered.
No, there's no sewer there. On-site, set the soil-
With 10,000 square feet? Really?
It had them on there at one time already. That was an area, south 117 Marmack area, wall drop drive, there's a lot of high-density residential in that area. At one time, years ago, there were existing residences already on that site, they were removed, there's just two there now. The owner wishes to put two more back. Sometime back when the land was zoned, first time it was zoned RA 20, which allows just 20,000 square foot lots, if you allowed him to put those homes in there, it would be non-conforming, so he's asking for a reduction in the lot size requirement.
I just did not know in today's world that you'd get a septic tank and a residence on a 10,000 square foot lot.
Yes, sir.
You couldn't if they had a water system running?
You can if it will, as long as environmental health signs off on the permit, then it's suitable to, you know, 10,000 is still a large lot with regards to some city lots are a lot less, you know, but they're on the sewer.
That's correct.
But 10,000 is the minimum that we allow.
Has environmental health okay these?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Right, because if he doesn't go and get the rezoning, there's no point to move forward with his subdivision plat.
Okay.
And this is a less expensive option than having the surveyor do his work.
Okay. Thanks.
Any doubts? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There's no appointments run?
No appointments in, um, we're removed.
Okay. Slide by that. And then, unfinished business, our greater public affairs will step up.
Would you let me do that now?
You do.
I can wait.
I would suggest we wait. We want to give publicity to the public.
Yeah, I agree. And then, we'll look at the EMS billing and collection contract, change it subject to the county attorney's approval. Update on the Canterbury Village street improvement projects?
Yeah, I'm just gonna give you an update on that, and I prefer to wait for the meeting on that.
They walked on open broadband.
Right. And that, we're ready to go. We, the board, the city is ready to participate at $4,800 on their part, so that was the last piece of the puzzle we were looking at, so we're ready to go with it now.
Yeah, for those who don't know, Mount Olive was so interested, they went ahead and deployed it, and they're signing the contract, so.
Yeah, Mount Olive, if you're, they have a point of presence there, coming down off their water tower, and you remember that was gonna be the secondary pop, is what they call them, point of presence, but that's basically where you're back to hard cable and then it goes to the internet. So, that's actually good for the whole system that they're doing that, but it will be separate with Mount Olive.
Glad to see it. Do we get a consent agenda, all those exclusions look okay in the President's experience?
Everything's fine there, Craig and I reviewed them all, and of course, more importantly, Allen's reviewed them, and he's fine with them.
All right, Allison, Field Group, are the budget amendments?
Yes, sir. First one you have is for the Maxwell Center, this is number 112. This is to anticipate and appropriate the 1.5 million that we received from the Tobacco Trust. We have received 1 million of those funds, but we will not receive the remaining 500,000 until after the farmers market is built. For the Maxwell Center, we have one, this is to approve change orders numbers four through 12, and to appropriate some additional funds for the furniture fixtures and equipment budget. Part of this money, 100,000, is expected to be reimbursed by the City of Goldsboro related to some detention pond issues, and then part of this is being reali-, the majority of this is being reallocated from our contingency line item, and then a small amount from balance. For the street assessments, we are, and there is a capital project ordinance behind that budget amendment as well. For the street assessment, a budget amendment for the first three change orders that have been approved, and they are totaling 56,156.62. The other part of that budget amendment, it relates to the first contract that was done with SEPI, it was a separate contract for 29,500, and we're just appropriating monies for that contract. And there's a capital project ordinance amendment behind that as well. For the Health Department, $3,644, this is additional funding we received from Department of Public Health for the Wise Woman Program, and this will be used for various services for this particular program.
Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna go back one.
Okay, sure.
On the street assessment.
Yeah, that's one of those.
That was not an increase in the cost there, it was just-
It is.
It is an increase, we've run into some utility conflicts, and so we're having to adjust the price for that. And what happened, and that's part of what I was gonna explain later, but basically, what it is, is, you know, the drainage system has to be degraded to keep the water flowing. So, what we've run into is we have two or three conflicts with existing water lines, so you have to move the water lines. And it's basically just doing an L and a couple L's and get it out of the way. You know, they either put it, typically put that below first, that's what you do.
in 29.5, that what's gonna be added to the assessment?
Yeah, and remember, we're well below what the estimated assessment was. You remember when we did the public hearings, when we bit it out, the project came in much lower than we had estimated. So, we're still well below what we had told the folks our engineering estimate was.
And if my understanding is correct, on the water lines, our engineering group could not move those water lines, they had to be done by the water district.
That's correct, and they've been working with us.
All right.
In fact, at our request, they got a separate company because the guy was taking too long, and we asked if they'd revisit that, and they did, and they got someone else in there that could do it quicker.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, my question on having to move the water lines is-
The water lines was put in on the roadway, I mean, the street was paved as under DOT's bids.
Right.
The water lines were put in would be on the roadway of the street or road. When the sanitary district put them lines in, they had a map and the plans from DOT to go by where to put them, and I know it's probably filled in some, but I guess got an issue with having these people, when it wasn't their fault and it wasn't the county's fault, I mean, whoever put them water lines in should have known how deep to put them by using the DOT's, because, trust me, they was like a stack of papers that thick from DOT. I just, but, you know, it's what it is, but I just, I think the taxpayers are being gouged on this, I think the sanitary district should have had to brunt this bill. Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner E. Todd, I mean, they installed water lines, they were in error in regards to following the depth and so forth. All of a sudden now, if we're going back and discovering that, looks like that they would be responsible for moving their water line because it was not too great. That's, that's just the way I look at it, but I'm not an engineer now.
Well, you know, we had that discussion, and, you know, we can still go back and look at it, but I had to move the project forward, because if we got into litigation on this, you, you know, this project would be in limbo for months and months and months. So, I made the decision to go ahead with it, but that doesn't mean we can't revisit the issue.
That's what I would suggest, can we just pull those engineering drawings from back then and make sure?
Yeah.
And because of the drainage that DOT is proposing, is the change, has there been any change in the drainage policies? Because it could be that, depending on how they're doing the drainage, it could make those lines not deep enough. So, I would suggest that we look into that and just see-
At this point, I wouldn't say whose fault it is, because we may be requiring that certain drainage ditches and things are deeper and things like that, so I would just hold off till we see that, but we can revisit that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Did I understand you wanted to move this forward because it needed to be moved forward for the welding and all the other thing?
Yeah.
So, if we, I just wanna say, you can look to save 10 cents and lose 50 cents.
Well, the time to argue about it is on the back end, because we, the bottom line is the work has to be done, or we're gonna tie up the project. So, we move forward with it, but I don't disagree, we should, you know, we should take a deeper look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Allison.
For Solid Ways, this is number 132. We are reallocating $8,582.50 from the demo line item. This is to purchase a gas analyzer to replace the current model that would be in need of significant amounts of repair. For Literacy Connections, they are requesting to reallocate 10,400 from extra help to salaries and wages. They no longer have a part-time individual, so they don't really need the funds in that line item, but they do have, I think they did take a part-time person full-time, so they're just moving those monies to account for that. The next three, I've grouped together for the Juvenile Crime and Prevention Council, and these are all related to programs that at June 30, 2017, had some funds remaining, and so they are having to pay those funds back to the state. So, we're anticipating receiving those so we can remit it to the state. So, that's number 138, 147, and 148. For Social Services, they are requesting to reallocate funds from their salaries line item, and I apologize, I just noticed the description's not on there, from the regular salaries line item to overtime wages. Due to staff turnover and new hire training, additional hours were needed to address the backlog of paperwork, and they are trying to meet a deadline for the NCFAST daycare program.
Just a question, are those the service there, are they catching that name?
Yes, we are. I think they're pretty well called.
They are, we are pretty well called. Because you know, this has been a, I'm going same anymore, I was over there. Yeah, okay.
And they're transitioning to, from, on NCFAST daycare, from the county paying all of those daycare providers to the state doing it, but it's been postponed, so I think that's why they're still having some backlog. They're saying the new date is December, that they're gonna start paying it, so we'll see. For 21st Century, this is in Cooperative Extension 4H, they're requesting to decrease the 21st Century grant funds. This is the prior year grant funds, and these were the monies that weren't spent. They will receive an additional contract for the upcoming year, but they just have not received it yet. And I think they typically do not have this much in funds left over, but they had some, I think they had some medical issues with the personnel that were carrying out this program, so they weren't able to do quite as much. For Human Resources, requesting to reallocate $13,106 from the workers' comp line item to the excess insurance policy line item. This is an audit that's done every year on our jobs and the class codes for each of our jobs, and based on that audit, depending on if we've added certain types of positions, they may have to adjust our policy accordingly. For the Health Department, anticipating an additional $400 in the Minority Diabetes Prevention Program. For the Library, they received $75 as prize money at the fair, so they are gonna use that to go back into their program. And it was for a reading booth that they had at the fair. For our county capital project specifically for Spillman, this is being requested to move $4,600 over to that line item. They need to purchase a rack and UPS for the backup server for this project, and they are taking that out of the non-stateboard 911 funds. There is an amendment to the ordinance behind that as well. For Wayne Net, they're requesting to reallocate $50,000 from regular salaries and wages line item to extra help. If you recall, I think I mentioned a few weeks ago that they're doing some cleanup on their positions, and there are several positions that are listed as regular part-time, which means they should receive benefits, but that's not actually the intention of their position. So, they're moving those to the just part-time line item. For the Sheriff's Office, they're requesting to reallocate a total of $25,322.10 from controlled substance and seized property. This is to purchase a vehicle for the Sheriff's Office. They need to purchase an additional vehicle for the part-time deputies that are handling the involuntary commitment transports. They've had an increase in the number of those that are having to be done, so they need another vehicle.
The reason for that is the hospital has closed the psych unit here, so when we get these, we're having more and more trips we're having to make to get them into a psych bed. You basically have to call around the state, see who's got one, and then you've gotta take them. And anybody who's involuntarily committed, it's on the sheriff's department to get them there.
Did I hear you say that the hospital has closed?
Temporarily, just temporarily, there, my understanding is they're recruiting-
They lost, they lost a psychiatrist and hadn't been able to recruit one to protect it. Because that's the 24/7 thing, and the ones that they had left were unable to handle the demand, because they got the wrong practices as well. So, they're working diligently trying to recruit everybody up, and so hopefully it's gonna be a temporary situation.
One of the problems that you have is that if you find a bed, the deputies got to sit there with the patient until they are admitted, and sometimes that takes many hours.
Final budget amendment I have for you is for Meadow Lane and Edgewood Capital Project. This is to transfer over an additional $19,000 to that project. This was to cover the initial foundries and surveys, boundary surveys that were done at the very beginning, and we're taking that from the school sales tax monies, so we're just transferring those monies up there. And there is an amendment to the ordinance behind that as well.
Any other questions? Thank you. Allison. And then, we're gonna be talking about patient fees and eligibility, that, off, the Health Department.
These are just some minor changes, as Board said, they do this about once a year, and part of this is where federal or state regulations change, and so there are some changes on that from family planning, Title X guidelines. The changes are in red ink, as you see on there.
Six, we kind of touched on, is the pre-sales surplus property jointly owned by the town of Fremont.
Right.
And the seventh, the sale of surplus property is recommended by a purchasing manager.
And there's where the substitute sheet that she gave you goes in, right, Carol?
The number, the first one, the town of Fremont is the-
Is the, excuse me, is the substitute.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The second one is in your agenda package correctly.
And number eight, due to a clerical error, we need to refund some property tax.
Yeah, this is just a clerical error, it was posted wrong, and so-
If I can interrupt, number eight is now declaring that real property is surplus, that was the additional add-on.
Oh, okay.
So, that comes with-
So, we didn't add it down to 12, or something, or did it up there?
Yeah, I did, it was 12, but that's all right.
I'm sorry, I just kept it all together, my apologies.
That's fine, we'll get back.
Thank you.
Okay, next, motion to establish a public hearing on November 21 regarding the economic development historical reservation and urban redevelopment agreement between the City of Goldsboro and County Wayne.
Yeah, this is the project, as you know, that we've been discussing with the city for some time, to redevelop that property. Borden and I have reviewed the proposed agreement, he has subsequently sent some proposed changes to Mr. Womble, but we're down close enough, we think everything will be fine, so in the interest of time, what we'd like to do is have y'all call for the public hearing today. Public hearing will be in two weeks, and that will give them time to work through the minor changes they want to make to the agreement, and then we'll be ready to go. So, all we're doing today is calling the public hearing. By law, in order to do these incentives, you have to have a public hearing tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We're calling for the public hearing, but the details of all of this, when would that be released for the public to make some comments?
At the public hearing.
At the public hearing.
Right. And all the details are as we agreed to. I think they're looking at some language, some tweaks here and there, but there's no fundamental disagreement on any key point, is my understanding.
Thanks. Okay, next is the work authorization for the executive jet port, the WK Dickerson.
Yeah, this is just the, the LPA, we have to do an update on the airport master plan every five years, and that's what this is. So, if you recall, we have a, we have a master contract with WK Dixon to be our airport consultant and engineer, and then anytime we want to add to the scope of work, we do one of these work authorizations, which is the scope of work. So, this would authorize them to begin work on that master plan at the airport. And again, this is a state requirement, and we've been doing enough changes out there. If you recall, the current one has the corporate hangars, which as y'all know, we're working on them now, at the other end of the airport, but as y'all recall, we ran into wetlands there, had to move it to the other end of the airport. So, we really need to get this master plan up to date, particularly as we go in and ask for state funding on these projects, which we're getting ready to do on the corporate hangars. We're just waiting on them to tell us when they've got the rules and regs ready, and we're ready to, ready to file that application. we're ready to, ready to file that application.
All right, the next is a resolution examining the 16th Amendment to the Position Classification and Pay Plan.
Yeah, this is a little unusual. This one is not increasing any pay, it's decreasing. We found that we had, we were a little higher on the job than we needed to be on the paralegal, and as we interviewed Troy Lab, that came to light, so, and I will say, we've come to terms with the paralegal, and so she will be starting, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, yeah.
Okay. She'll be starting shortly. So now that's, that office is fully staffed.
So you really start producing now, right?
Start producing.
Sorry about that. And I guess it'll be 13 now, the add-on for the, no, you moved that, that's right, I'm sorry.
Wherever you want.
You moved that, you moved it up there. I got it.
You put it anywhere you want, Carol.
Yeah, leave it where you got it. Then I think Selena, I mean, you business Selena, Beaman's going to be coming over and talking to us?
Yes, and, and some of this is to get some publicity, because as y'all know, you have open enrollment on Medicare every year, and this is that time period, so what we wanted to do was get some publicity on the fact that our ship coordinator can help people do that, and it's a great service. Having just signed up for Medicare, they helped me online, so it's great. It's a great service.
I'll be listening carefully because I'm not far away.
Minimy a year, I think.
Okay, then Victor Haines is going to come over, he's working for the NC Commercial Regional Former Offender Director, and go make a presentation. I think he made a presentation to the city already.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a motion to say, a resolution for inspection, provide inspection services for the town of Mount Olive.
Yeah, just to go over that a little bit with you, Craig and I and Steve Stroud had a meeting down in Mount Olive with Charles Brown, the town manager. They have, they had a inspector who was operating off of probationary certificates, those have expired, and so we met to talk about how we might handle this, and what we're doing is we'll simply step in and do the inspections, and the agreement is we'll do them, we will issue the permits, we'll do the inspections, and the cost of the service to the town will be, we'll just collect the fees, because that's typically, you know, the fees are designed to cover our cost. So Charles is good with that. We told them we'll do it as long as they need us to do it, because it takes a while to get somebody who's certified, and really, until they have somebody certified in all four areas, they can't do it, because a probationary person has to be working under the license or certificates of someone who has those levels.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wood, does this mean that anyone wanting to get something inspected would just simply come straight to our?
Come straight to our office, or they, they can go on our website because you can apply online, and all of the contractors that, that they have issued permits to, they all have business here in Goldsboro too. So it's, it really won't be an inconvenience for them. They'll just add it to our list. And then what we'll do is, obviously, we'll aggregate those in Mount Olive and send an inspector down there and try to do all of them at one time.
Could a newspaper please put that in bold print so that all our good folk, this would affect, will see it more in time?
Right.
That would help.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
How is this going to affect our number of employees in our inspection department? How is it going to affect, sometimes we have a backlog, how, how is it going to affect that?
Steve thinks we'll be okay with it, they don't have that many, so we, we think we'll be okay. Now, one thing we have agreed to do also is they've got a young man in their public works department, they're trying to get to take the courses and everything, so he'll actually ride with our people some and get some training, but he's not licensed, so he can't do them. But that is the game plan, is to get them somebody trained, but we don't think that workload will be a problem. Steve's, Steve's confident he can handle it.
Well, it's not a concern, but I've just, I can see this dragging on for a long time.
Well, I'll be honest with you, my preference would be that we take it over.
Okay.
Permanently. The reason is, they're going to continue to have this problem, and the reason is, is that by the time you get somebody licensed in all four areas, they, they become a valuable commodity. Then if they, then they're able to get level twos, there's, I guess I should drop back and explain this. There are three levels on building inspections. Level one, basically, you can do residential inspection. Level two, you can do all of level one and then some commercial. Level three is you can do any building, an industrial building, whatever, you know, high-rise building, anything like that. Now Steve has all level threes and everything, so there's nothing in, in Wayne County that he can't inspect. The problem for the smaller towns is just to keep a level one is difficult, because as you get, every time you get a level, you can automatically apply, like if you get a level one, you can automatically apply and get a two-year probationary certificate in the next level up. And then if they take, they take the coursework, they take the test, then they get a level two. As these people start getting level twos, what will happen is these small towns can't afford to keep them, and other people will, you know, make an offer, because it's a statewide code, so, and they'll lose it. And so it's going to be a cycle, and that's what you're seeing. So really, the preference long-term, in my opinion, would be smaller communities, it makes sense for them to just have the county do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Pikeville and Fremont, are we doing their inspecting now?
I think we are. I think we do everybody in Goldsboro.
Everybody except for Mount Olive.
Everybody in Mount Olive and Goldsboro?
Yeah. Yes, that's right.
I mean, that, that makes it make even more sense, so.
Yeah, it, it's just going to be a vicious cycle for them, trying to keep people. I've seen it myself. I've been in that situation when I was a small town manager, and I turned it over to the county.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Clarify, I got up early this morning. Is it my understanding that they are just referring everybody to our county office?
Yeah.
And that our fees are the fees that are assessed?
Yeah, we will charge our fees, and it will be, we will issue the permits, there will be a county inspected job.
So they're not setting the fees in Mount Olive, it's our fees?
It's our fees.
Okay.
And they're not that off either, is my understanding, when we had our discussion. We didn't go down, you know, item by item, but basically they're roughly the same, so I don't think that's going to be a problem. And the other thing, in talking about taking these over, is, you know, there's the code, but there's also how people interpret the code.
Tell me about that.
I shouldn't have brought this up. But one of the things that you have is if, if the county's doing all the inspections, there's a consistency there with the contractor. And it doesn't matter whether, because our contractors do work all over the county and outside the county, but if, but, you know, there's a consistency there for them. They know it doesn't matter if you go to Mount Olive, Pikeville, whatever, you're going to get a consistency in how we interpret the code.
Moving on. Next coming up is a resolution naming a bridge and honor Dr. John Torth. I think the resolution's in the packet.
It's in the packet, and did you want to read that yourself?
You don't have to read it.
You don't have to read it.
Don't have to read it.
And then we got two back-to-back funding service agreements, well, French Town, Princeton.
Right, both of these are for people outside, you know, these are with these two towns.
And after that, our finance register will come up for two different, three things. Quarterly financial for the county, and quarterly financial for the tourism, you know, excuse me, just two things. And we wait, we'll wait for that. Then announcement of $150,000 in federal funds for the Wayne County jet port.
Right, if you don't mind, I'll wait.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Before we leave this, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I want to back up just a second. I've had a chance to read under unfinished business, the broadband that we're looking at, and I just wanted to, you will refresh my memory, this is a pilot program, but I wanted to make sure, I see this as a two-year contract. The, during this time, even though this is pretty well, the, the scope of work is pretty well laid out here, but during that time, will we still be looking at other areas that's not on here, like the northern part of Wayne County?
That's the, well, that's the intent of doing the pilot. And then what we're, what he's agreed to do is then to, if everything works out there, then he wants to deploy ultimately countywide. That's the plan.
Okay, but during this time, will there be any studies done to see if it can even be implemented?
That, that's what he'll be doing.
Okay, that's, so that's in this agreement here?
Yeah, and one of the things, and in here, Chip put that in there, basically talking about, you know, making plans for full deployment, but that's definitely our goal, is to get it out throughout the entire county.
I just wonder if the, since Mount Olive's already jumped on board so quickly, if it won't speed this process up?
It will.
I think.
It will. And again, we think, and they think, the assets are there if they can get access to them, because it's water towers, cell towers, things like that, that they need to make antennas on. So really, at this point, a lot of it will be us introducing them to like the water districts, people like that to control those water tanks.
They just got the head.
And see what they can work out on. And Chip's already made preliminary contact with the water companies, and they're all interested in talking with them about it.
Well, I'm, I'm just glad that we didn't move too quick on this, and it's taken a while. Bill, how long, three years?
Yeah, well, only two years with Chip, but you and I have saw a presentation three years ago.
Yeah, and so this has really looked good so far, because as you know, our, our Board of Education, there's going to come a time when all the students are going to have to have, there are going to be no textbooks.
And that's been the big push to get this.
Yeah.
That, and we've got a lot of agribusinesses out there that, you know, obviously by definition in rural areas, and they don't have the broad bandwidth, the bandwidth they need.
Yes.
So it's been a two-pronged thing, but both of those things have been pretty much the driving force in trying to get this done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we, county manager comments, board commissioner comments, do we need to close session?
Yes.
And what, for what reason?
To discuss the location of our businesses in the county to establish information and negotiating positions with respect to purchasing property and to consult with need to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Here's your motion to go and close session. Send them to emotional boards in discussion.
Okay. Thank you.